Let's say that, let's say that one, let's say you go down on the train. I get that.
You got the floor. All right. We're, we're trying for time tonight, so I'm gonna push it. Push the button in the box.
There you go. There it is. Okay. Um, great. So we'll, we'll try and make sure that we get through this in the next 30 minutes. But what we'll be presenting tonight are basically 20 minutes. Okay. 25, 20 minutes. Keeps getting shorter. Oh, we're gonna be sharing with you the floor plans. And I'm really excited to be standing here tonight because over the last two months, two and a half months, I've had the opportunity to sit down with all of staff, both with the managers as well as the entire department, to take a look at their space and make sure we were really counting on everything that they needed, that it would be functional for where they were going, and not just assuming that we knew what they were doing. And having said that, I set up meetings, I met with them, and what you're gonna see tonight are what I feel are pretty much our final plans. We're very comfortable. We've cut out spaces, we've cut out conference rooms, we've made things smaller in order to make sure that we were trying to do the best that we could within the space that we had. So having said that, you'll see here, this is just the basic site plan of how the building will lay out on the site along with the fire department. One of the questions that keep coming up was the fact, how many parking spaces do we have? So right now, just basically laying it out, we're right around 55, which is exactly how many are out there now. I took a look at how much staff we would have. We currently have about 18 to 19 that'll be moving to that building. With the ability of, we looked at a new accounts manager clerk kind of thing, along with some growth in case we needed stuff in billing. So we could even blossom out with the space that we have to as many as 25, even more employees. But you can see with 55 spaces, even if we had 25 people there, we, we still have plenty of room to accommodate residents coming in. We'll be respectful of the parking, obviously, towards the fire department. We don't wanna have too many conflicts there. But I still feel we're only taking away, I think, 10 parking spaces there. So we're still down to 45, 25. That's 20 spaces for people to come in and come out, have meetings. So I do think we're gonna be able to be just fine on the site as we are. Again, in the future, if we have to expand or change that, we have Day Street, we have several items that we can do there, whether it's additional parking on the street, eliminating the road, getting it to be just a driveway, expanding some of the parking that way, several options available for us. So I'm very, very comfortable with how we have it laid out now and being able to show it to you. So moving to our first floor, this is the overlay of that. As you see, we're still coming in on that first floor off of Haymaker as well as Water Street, being able to walk in through there, having a nice open lobby area with the ability as you come in then to expand and either go to the left, which is gonna be more our utilitarian type area, or going down to the right and heading towards council chambers. As you see here, we have the women and men's restrooms or public restrooms off of that area. You'll see the stairway that will take you up as well as the new elevator. Nice thing there I wanna point out is executive council chambers. Again, we've got a nice large table in there. You'll be able to exit into that when you have to do that during your meetings. You have a small area that you can bring your constituents into, meet with residents. There's gonna be some small file cabinets, so if you guys wanna leave things here and then be able to pick those up the night of your meeting, as well as the location of any mail or things that you wanna receive, that would all take place in this area. We're also gonna provide an area within the executive conference room as a small little counter space, if you will, a little sink. That way, if you'd like to have maybe coffee before a meeting, or sometimes we celebrate a birthday, or we have an event, or we do a presentation here, we'll have the ability to lay that out and have a little bit of easy access to it. One of the questions that came up was security and how do we address that on this floor? There's a lot of mechanical ways that we're gonna do that. We'll certainly continue to investigate that, whether it's camera systems, you know, motion detector, those kinds of things. But one item that kinda spurred us was the possibility of maybe having an office area down here. Now, who will be in that? Yet to be determined. I don't know if it'll be staff, maybe there might be a nonprofit organization that needs a home, a chamber, the Main Street, Kent. There's a lot of different options we can play with that. But the one thing nice about this, if we do utilize this space for that, it's possible that we'd have somebody there Monday through Friday, same operating hours that we have. So then you have a clear eye on who's coming in and who's going out. Going down that area, you'll see then that there's another community meeting room that has a door right off of the open public space. So again, we've talked about the accessibility and use of this space. We're allowing that to be expanded so that if there are community groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, if we want to, several communities, we'll do an open house where the schools' children's artworks are in this area, and we have that opportunity to do that. It also gives us an area that if we'd like to do things with our businesses or our residents and invite them in for an evening, we have that space to do that. Next to that then, we really begin our utilitarian area, which is our staff kitchen area and break room, where they'll come down and they'll have their lunches and dinners, or lunch, um, gosh, I hope they're not here all the time for dinner. But, then you have your mechanical room, your shared workroom where everybody will be coming to. This is just a larger workroom. We have workroom space on each floor, but this is just a larger area that if Amy needs to lay out a lot of stuff, she has the ability to come out down here. This'll also be where we can do large amounts of copying, mailroom, those kinds of things will take place in here. And then, this was the hardest part in talking with everybody, but making sure we had enough storage and long-term storage. As we all know, we have records retention, and there's a lot of space right now down at 9:30 overholds, and they're up in cages, not exactly the best way that we should be storing those records. These spaces, we felt will hold what we currently have there and give us room for expansion. And then, as we follow our records retention, we get rid of things, we do feel that this will be great space for all of those things. So you have HR, law, and then, of course, our finance. We've also allocated space, oops, if you can go back real quick, to our IT. So we are making sure that we are going to accommodate IT, which seems to always be the last thing that always gets left out. But then we also have mechanical and electrical there. And can you go back one more to the council chambers? And then, of course, there's council chambers. That has not changed for us. We've left that pretty much as is. Your dais again is up six inches, so there's a small way for us to get up. Storage on either side so that we can make sure that if we needed to store anything, our avian visuals are all there as well. And then, on the left-hand side, you'll see where directors will have an opportunity to sit.
Millie?
Yes.
How, how huge is that generator building?
The generator building?
It looks like it's...
It's off to the side.
Yeah.
We have not determined yet if the generator is going to be for lifesafety purposes only or if it's also going to be big enough to power the finance department or things like that. So the point of that is that it's kinda tucked back in the hillside, but then the piping and all the conduits and everything connect directly into the building to where your switchgear and all that stuff will be.
And so...
That's a placeholder right now. And as we develop the actual size of the generator, we'll determine how big that really needs to be.
Right. And one thing...
Outside the building.
Right. One thing to remember, though, if you wanna know what size a building needs to be in order to bring up a large building, drive over to the police department, and I wanna say that that one is almost 18 by the entire length of the jail. And the main reason for that is the generator has to be centrally located, you have to have X amount of feet on either side, you have to be able to have the ability to open the doors, the breakaway, and the ability to be able to make those connections. So I wouldn't have thought it needed to be that large either until we started installing it over there. Moving up to our second level then, you'll see again, you have, it is open down to the second floor, so you'll be able to look over that. We'll have a nice space to be able to look at, along with the nice glass that you'll be looking in. We'll be entering off the parking lot in the back. The nice part about that is there'll be a little wayfinding, but with the way that we had great conversation with finance, we were able to set it up so that it's pretty visible, so you can kinda see exactly where you gotta go when you get up there. So having said that, if you wanna click on... No, that's okay. So you come into the main public lobby, and straight away, there'll be a sign, but right there is where our civil service office is gonna be. It's a great place for her than when we have action and things like that, and jobs are open, there's a lot of people that come and visit. She has enough room in there to be able to conduct her meetings with the small group from time to time, along with all of her storage. There is a public restroom right there as well. You'll see the elevator and the stairs. But the nice part is everything is glass, and again, you can see over. So right there, as you look at it, right to the right is where we have our public and finance area. So you can see there's a nice area to walk right up to, you're able to pay your bills. There's a glass window there, so there's some sense of security or separation, so people can have that safety on both sides. There's a nice conference room there. That way, if residents do come, they have concerns or problems with their bills, we're able to take them into a room privately and be able to have that conversation and try and help them through that situation. The other nice thing is that we do assist people here with taxes. And so we are providing a nice little kind of private area for a person that does those taxes. She has a nice little counter space there, so they can work through a counter. But then it's kind of a little more private right now. If you visit us at 9:30 overhaul, everybody can kinda hear what's going on. So we're really happy with that, and she had some great suggestions on how to do that and make sure that it's completely accessible. This entire wing here, we are dedicating to the finance department. And again, some great suggestions when we went in to see them. But you'll see that we have a very open space, so you have your tax counters, your billing counters, you have some open spaces for us to be able to take calls for businesses. Now, there are a few extra spaces here. It is for expansion in the future, but we felt it was important to show that just so that you could get a feel that if we need to have more employees and Mr. Coffee and Ms. Hall did not pay me to say this, but I do think they are a little understaffed and at some point in the future are gonna need some help, especially with utility billing. But then you can see that we have accounts payable, you have accounts receivable, you have payroll clerk, a nice conference room then. Remember, we have auditors that visit every two years, and then they come in and do spot checks. They need a space. They're not here for two days, they're here sometimes for, you know, two weeks, up to three months, four months, five months. So we've got some nice space that they can go into. Again, then your payroll, and then the finance director's office. We have a nice little storage on that end as well, because they have things that they have to store and put away there. The nice thing that they really liked about this is also an open floor plan, so they have the ability to talk to each other if somebody needs some help or somebody needs some answers answered. They can do that relatively easy here. And then again, on the side facing to the south, you have the controller. They also have their restrooms on this floor, and then, of course, the emergency stair exit on the end.
Excuse me, Millie. John, you got your hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On this section off the lobby, is this a railing lookover or is this a glass wall?
Um, I, I think right now it's a railing lookover, is what we're thinking.
The reason I ask is I know in an overhaul road, they have that open feeling to the second floor, and it's just like a heat wind tunnel that goes up there. So it's hard to have the control of the HVAC system because of that. And that's why I was just wondering if that was gonna be a glass, glassed in or...
It won't be. It's gonna be open, but that's a really good point. We do struggle with that at 9:30 overhaul, absolutely. One of the ways that we're gonna be able to handle that, though, that I really do appreciate, everything's a pod. So remember, we're gonna be closed off and secure from everybody else. So that pod, you know, you'll have your open area, the office for civil service will be able to be locked and the door closed all the time during the day. So I do think that with new things, new situations, the way that you're able to provide heating and cooling, I think that it will not nearly be any of the problems that we have at 9:30. And I do think that we'll be able to handle that with how we go ahead and lay that out. But, good point.
Isn't that also like kinda west-facing?
Um, it's, it's northwest, I guess, if you would say that, more north than it is west.
Get the late day sun, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. We'll certainly take a look at that when we're looking at window treatments and the panels in that open area, for sure. Lots of things out there that we can do with it.
It also added, sorry...
No, go right ahead.
Coffee station...
Oh, yeah, I did forget that.
...on each floor for the department, so they don't have to go all the way down to the break room for, for quick things like that. And the intention is that every conference room also has, the larger conference room also have a counter or the sink to provide coffee or whatever.
Okay. There we go. And now we're all the way up onto the, the second floor, if you will, or where we have our mayor, city manager, law department, and HR. Again, you'll come up the elevator, up those stairs. We'll have a little bit of wayfinding, but like, once you come up, again, something that I really appreciate with all of the staff, once you come up those stairs or out of that elevator, you'll see that there's glass areas. So right there, that orange area is what we're calling our law department pod. I think it was well laid out, again, some great suggestions from the law department. So you have your law director, the assistant law director, the admin to the assistant, administrative assistant. But there's glass along that wall, so people are gonna be able to see somebody behind there. There'll be some direction. And then, right across from the administrative assistant, you see the clerk of council. So again, they're very visible, they're gonna be out there, people are gonna be able to see them, and they'll be able to help direct people where they need to go. Now, keep in mind, it's not like this is on that main floor. If people are up on this floor, they're probably there 99.9% of the time, 'cause they have an appointment with somebody, whether that's the mayor, the city manager, the law director. So I don't see like we're gonna have 600 people in a day up on that area. One of the things that our clerk of council had some great input on, and I really appreciate, we do a passport program here. And she was able to lay out for us an ability, again, for a nice pass-through window, kind of a little private up there to the north side, little area that people can wait while she's doing what she needs to do. But I think it'll be a nice area where it'll be really conducive for that type of product that we put out. And on the bottom left there, you'll see that's our HR manager. That is a great location for her, and right across from her is where her file storage is that she needs like on an everyday basis. The nice part about keeping her where she is, this gives her the ability, and for our employees, if they need to see her, a little bit of privacy, they don't have to walk down a long hallway in front of everybody. It also gives her the ability, if she needs to have a meeting, she's got lots of room for her to be able to do that. Again, a public toilet is on this floor as well.
Want to talk about the conferences?
The...
Big yellow conference room?
Oh, I forgot about that, yeah. So if you remember, when we started out, that's actually where the offices were. We really kind of changed that, as you saw, the finance director was way on the end, you'll see that our city manager is way on that other end with some views in like three or four different directions. But here now, we've put in the conference room, which we think is really gonna be a great view of the city when we bring people in, we have those conversations, staff meetings will be awesome in this space. We really think this took advantage of all of the things that we were trying to get one or two offices to take, take care of. If you'll note, it also mirrors that round edge. That will be a glass wall, so again, people will be able to see that, the transparency you had asked for, the ability for people to see in and be able to address all of those items. Again. And then, as you see, as we continue down here, you have the clerk of council, and right, right next to her is the mayor's office. And then, in that area, we have a conference area, you have the clerk storage. So again, everybody was really smart when we were trying to make things easily accessible, but provide them what they needed as far as space and area. Again, a little area for our IT on that third floor. We do have an office in the center for the economic developer, economic development, so that way, city manager and them can have people in, maybe have some meetings in those offices if they need it. And then, right behind economic development is the assistant to the city manager, and then the last office is the city manager's office. Again, their restrooms are on that floor, and you have a janitor's closet along with the emergency stairwell on the end. There is a small conference room in that area if they would need that, that can also be storage if they want to when they start out. We do have windows in there when we start out, but it's gonna be tough to determine how much storage we actually need for both HR and law. So we may need to use a little bit of that, but we feel comfortable with the size that it is. We've got it down as small as we can get it. So that in a nutshell is our floor plans. And again, my hat goes off to all of the staff, the directors, who were able to sit down, and we really kind of worked through this, cutting sizes down, if you compare it to any of the past plans. A majority of the offices got smaller. Some of them that you see, oh my gosh, they got bigger. It's just that we, you know, we had too many conference rooms, is what we were hearing. So what we were trying to do is shrink the building, and so some of those expanded into those areas where we had smaller storage. But everybody did a great job. Again, we had some great suggestions from staff. And so I do feel very excited and very good about these plans, that these will really be something that once everybody moves in, they're gonna be really pleased with.
Any questions, Heidi?
Yeah, I feel kinda sad for the IT guy. Look at that tiny little closet, closet room.
Well, only on that floor. Remember, on the first floor, he had the huge, he had the, if you go all the way down to the first floor, he had a huge area.
That IT up here is...
But that's IT storage.
No, there's stuff that needs to run vertically...
Right.
...through all the cables and all the racks, all that stuff. That's what's in that closet.
So storage slash office. Now, that, and it...
In the closet.
'Cause it seems like you could make it bigger.
John?
It's just, it's just a closet for the racks.
John?
Okay. Oh, I noticed that you have the, the solar panel pitchers on the roof there. Have you went as far as to calculate a load on them yet? And are they gonna all be just for electric, or are there gonna be some thermal for the hot water?
Um, we have started doing some assumptions on the, the load and how much we think it can accommodate. I don't have those numbers right now. Right now, we're just planning all electric. The challenge is certain utility companies are more friendly in terms of being flexible in how the, how you sell back...
Right.
...extra capacity that you have. So as we move forward, we'll work with the utility company here and see what's the best deal for everybody in terms of utilization of that, and if you're able to sell any of that capacity back.
I think you oughta at least build a little bit of thermal solar in for your hot water, domestic water.
Any other questions? We're running short of time.
Restrooms on the first floor, are those, one stall enough for the...
Based on the requirements of a building department, yes. Those will make it. They are all handicap accessible, just so that everybody knows as well.
The main public restrooms are down on the ground floor, outside the council chambers. That's where the greatest load of the, of the public will be. So one on the first floor is more a convenience, where am I?
Right there, right there.
It's kind of a convenience one for, for visitors who will be there.
Yeah, you're on the...
Your assembly load is on the ground floor, so that's where we have the majority of that.
Any other questions? Roger.
So we've made a final decision that we're not going to put a third floor over the chamber, the council chambers. Is that correct? For future build-out?
At, at this particular point, that is the assumption, yes.
We are planning on structuring the roof, especially if we put solar on there, we're structuring the roof so that it is capable to do that in the future, to expand in the future. So you have the flexibility.
Any other questions? Are we pretty well satisfied with what's presented tonight, so we can move on?
Very much.
Yeah.
Any questions, any? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Millie.
Thank you.
Now we can, we got the inside, now we work on the outside?
In March, you'll see the outside.
All right, let's move on.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got border control.
I do too. I, that's the only thing I don't want.
Can you beam me the outside?
If anybody wants to talk to council under public communication, you must sign in.
Here, you wanna go sign in then? You're welcome.
I think she was supposed to do that.
I think the mayor has a...
I don't know if she did.
Yeah, I can't remember. No response. Did, did I do that to you? Any chance? Sure? No, okay. I'm just trying to remember.
Here, Jenna? Hi, Jenna Rogers.
Yeah, well, you can do that. I mean, you have the money.
I'd like to, I'd like that, that you got that conference room there. Yeah.
You can set up anywhere you want, or you can, you know...
And Dave's still got the counter off.
Probably if you want some speakers, a lot of times, they set up this way and shoot that way, or they set up in the back there by those doors. All right? We'll see after the meeting. Hey, hey, law director.
You gotta lean on your cap, by the way.
Yeah, good to see you. Haven't seen you forever.
And they have a meeting. Paul, I think, that we can make a present there.
So it's like...
Yeah.
All right. So we got the minutes for, are you okay with the minutes? Why you moving the minutes?
Understand, you should.
Any discussion on our minutes, all favor?
Aye.
I think there's two sets, right? There was an original...
Email, we sent it out.
Enough said. Any discussion on those, all favor?
I'd like to, I'd like to be as quiet as possible. To that. I don't know if I could...
Once again, if anybody needs to talk to council under public communication, you must sign in with the court.
This would be at a hearing, whether it be Rotary.
I also have a grant, I'm pretty eager. I mean, if I could break away...
Do we have any dog away signs? If they did work your ways or something?
You want to, if you want your comment...
Well, we've got a new person on our street. And when you first pull up GLAD, there's a children's sign on that. If they could put something on the backside of that sign, facing up the street, 'cause everybody else on the street's pretty courteous. This one girl has three dogs, and there's never been a turd.
We've got now, just like every day.
What do you, what do you do?
The floor, it's more fashion.
Oh, ten years old? Oh, God, yes. And with the, at the economy tanks.
I know the scientist.
Why do you should go to the...
Today, Dan, I'm gonna call the public hearing to order, would the court please...
I like to flirt.
Mr. Amerine?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Farrara?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner called.
So move to, to excuse.
Second. You made a motion, just a second.
Second.
Second, but Mike, any discussion about his absence? Hearing not all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Follow the same sign further.
Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Okay. Bridget, you're gonna do the public hearing?
This is the first of two public hearings being held on the development of the City of Kent's five-year consolidated plan for the time period 2020 to 2024, and the city's program year 2020 annual action plan. The hearing provides the opportunity for the public to provide input on the city's Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG program, including the development and identification of proposed goals and objectives the city should consider as it moves forward with developing its five-year consolidated plan for the period 2020 through 2024, and the types of specific activities that should be funded as part of its first the types of specific activities that should be funded as part of its first program year in that consolidated plan of 2020. The city will be submitting its 2020 to 2024 five-year consolidated plan in June to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Is there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, the public hearing is adjourned.
Thank you.
We got about three minutes before council starts. Again, if anybody needs to talk to council under public communication, you must sign them with the court.
I'll just reach over and borrow yours. I don't have much, right? Can you read what I wrote? I think I have. Yes. The name six nine. I'm pretty sure I have your numbers. Okay, cool. I will do it. Oh, sure. That's better, right? Come enjoy my baby. While they explain us. We'd like to start meeting based with.
Oh, we'd love to.
Okay, so just go ahead and sign in.
I'm the president. Here's what you need to do. Be under his, yeah, because we were in a fiscal year, like I ended up high end during the June period, so. But if you give me the information, I'll just, I'll move it right there, I'm sure it'll be something we want to do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I know it's hard to believe.
Been one of the bad guys. As you can. Okay. Third time, third time's a charm.
Maybe the worst, that's, that's, you just get a little more. But it's not far from like.
Wait, let me see.
We're trying to run their way to.
They have no punishment for speeding violations.
I hate this marking time, but I understand.
They have races up there. Yeah. I haven't had them, I'd like, one or two here.
I thought I was. I was on the. I read the, I said it on the thing, you know, it worked out. I don't know what, what. It's just so. What, you're having a crazy? Going to hotel after night. I should go all sweaty. It's up to you, you call it. It's your party.
We can watch a debate. Debate, debate.
Don't worry. No, I was on the. Yeah, I was in Tucson.
The council meeting February 19th, 2020, to order, would the court please read the roll?
Mr. Amerine?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Sedoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner called, asked to be excused, is there a motion?
Second.
Second by Jack.
Ms. Wallach?
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Follow the same sign, further?
Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Okay, we have opening remarks and the pledge by Ms. Wallach.
I don't have anything to say. I'm tired, how about that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion for the two, the regular council meetings, special council meetings, they're.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Follow the same sign. Alright, thank you. Under communications, for audience participation with the court, wait, I got to read something first. While the law does not require council to provide time for the public comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is the time where residents and others can comment on matters and concerns them. However, we will not engage in any debate, and as president of council, I reserve the right to end any public comments that are disruptive, embarrassing, harassing, or otherwise objectionable. We ask that when you come to the podium, that you speak into the mic, clearly give your name and address, and we will allot you three minutes to share your concern. Would the court please read the first person?
Christine Klein.
Good evening, thank you.
We finally meet face to face.
We do, thank you. I know we've met somewhere along the line.
We have.
It's nice to see you face to face. Thank you for allowing me up, having time. I'm a resident of Ward Six, Tracy Wallach, I'm also the part of the Civil Service Commission. I'm chairman the last couple of years, this is my fifth year, I got one more to go. And so I wanted to address, and again, I appreciate your time, I just wanted to address the letter that I sent to council, that Allison Shikowski, the other person and I, on the commission, sent to council, and just to ask essentially, to keep us posted when changes like this happen. So just to kind of back up a little bit, I received the timeline from Amy, thank you kindly. We learned at the December 16th Civil Service Commission meeting, that Lee had missed, Mr. Higgins, the third person, had missed the appointment. He said it was due to unforeseen circumstances, he missed it, he didn't know what else was going to happen. According to the timeline, I guess that was on December 20th, a letter was sent to Mr. Higgins. So at our Civil Service Commission meeting on December 16th, we did not know anything, and neither did he at that point. At our January 27th meeting, we learned, civil service meeting, we learned that he had to reapply. And that's when we're finding out through Dawn Bishop, our coordinator, we're learning, finding out more information about when council passed a new rule, that we didn't know anything about, that, that, especially a second application. We understand that Lee applied first, then he wasn't able to make it to the interview, I don't know anything else that transpired, but then he would have to reapply. And so we were questioning, as I said in the letter, essentially, this was all a surprise to us, and the surprise about, especially the reapplication, I've always thought you had to, I know when I interviewed, I had to come before council. I thought that was always, Allison Shikowski said the same thing, that you had to go and speak before council, so I didn't, I think for us, the surprise was a second application, that he applied once, he missed it. So my question, or my, it's not a question, it's my ask, I guess, is when rules like what happened October 2nd, council passes changes to the interview process, I would like the commissions to be involved, not involved, informed, to be informed. Pass that along, we have a coordinator, Dawn Bishop, pass that information along, it directly affects us, it would have helped us, I believe, because now we've not had a third person, which means it won't be a quorum, we haven't had a third person since December's meeting. We have had business to do, we've had exams, we, now, one exam did get canceled, it was the laborer and repair operator exam that was subsequently canceled, we do have a firefighter paramedic exam scheduled for early March. It's just hand, very nice to have three people as part of the commission to make decisions, to be present at exams, to have a quorum. I think some of this, I'm sure some of this could have been avoided of not having a third person, had we known about this change. We could have been, as the three members of the commission, been more proactive in terms, we could have been more proactive to make sure we kept a third person in place, whoever that was, right off the bat, if we would have known of any changes. So I guess that's my big ask, is from the last paragraph in the letter, is that we would like to request appropriate and transparent communication regarding council's rules that directly affect, in my instance, the Civil Service Commission, but I think it could apply to all commissions as a whole, that when you make a change, again, I don't know about the other commissions, we have Dawn Bishop, who's our coordinator, she would easily relay that information to us, and then hopefully not have this happen again. I know in my letter, I had asked about not waiting three months either, from what I understand, the next interview isn't until April, which, it's not too big of a hardship, but it would be nice to have the interview sooner, so that we could get a third person on the board sooner, rather than waiting till April. And I know we have other exams coming up and requests for exams, I don't know if we're going to have a February meeting yet, Dawn sent out a call for agenda items, we could easily have things to vote on, and it'll be in 10 days or so, we could easily have things to vote on, and there's still only two of us. So I'm also asking, I guess, if it would be possible to up the interview to March, instead of April, is what I understood.
Yeah, let me, we generally don't comment on it, but I'm going to go ahead and put my foot in my mouth. First of all, I apologize, I'm the president of this board, and I guess maybe the logistics of getting the new rule out just didn't work out the way it should be. Second of all, if we can change the date, we can't, they're already posted, and we have a legal obligation, like you do, civil service, we have a legal obligation to post things, and they're already posted, and we just can't change that in midstream. I guess that's the best I can answer your question. Am I right, Hope? I mean, once something's posted, it's posted.
Okay, well that makes sense.
So, it's my understanding from Dawn, that you have one test maybe in March?
Correct, we definitely have a firefighter, paramedic exam in early March.
Yeah, and then there's nothing till April.
Correct.
So I'm guessing, once we pick the person in April, they ought to be ready to go.
Should be.
And it's my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, Lee Higgins hasn't applied for it yet.
Okay, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I've never, I've never had contact.
It has to be on file with the court, so.
March, wasn't it?
March 24th.
Fourth or something?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's all on him, I can't speak to that.
I do know we do have one application, I'm not going to give the name, but as far as Lee, he did not.
Okay. I thought on the timeline, that it was March 6th was the add in the Tree City Bulletin, so how did we get another applicant if it wasn't posted?
It's on our website as well, yeah.
Yeah, we post on the website, and it's in the.
That's how.
Tree City Bulletin.
Okay, I just looked.
We do our best to get it out, you know, I'm sure we can do better.
Right.
Or we could obviously do worse, but we pick a.
You're pretty.
I have this hard copy of everything, you have everything there?
I have the timeline.
We got the letter to Mr. Higgins and everything, so I want you to have that.
Okay, thank you kindly.
And Amy did a wonderful job of getting it done on paper.
Right.
I mean, over a term of a couple of months, you'd lose track of what's going on, and that's the reason we didn't, I didn't get back with you, number one, your letter will be read into council minutes tonight, so.
Thank you. No, you do a very fine job, it just would be nice to be in the loop one.
Jerry, can I sit?
Oh, go ahead, Tracy.
Can you stay till the end of the council meeting, so, because I wanted to discuss that a little more?
Sure.
We're not allowed to say anything till the end of council.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you kindly, everybody, I appreciate it.
No, thank you. Again, I apologize.
It's okay, things happen, it's not a perfect world, but we're working on making it better, right?
You're right.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you. Amy, next.
Mr. Michael Frick.
Name and address for the record, please, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hello, I am Dr. Michael Fricki, a Franklin Township resident residing at 7395 Ohio 43. I am the campaign manager for Sensible Kent, and I am here to introduce the affidavit of petitioner's committee submitted to this council last week. The sensible marijuana ordinance removes jail time and reduces fines and court costs to $0 for minor cannabis offenses. The sensible ordinance has now been adopted in all major Ohio cities, with the passage in Cleveland on January 27th. Over 3 million Ohio residents are now protected by sensible ordinances, and sensible voter initiatives have an 80% success rate, once they reach the ballot across Ohio. Sensible ordinances at the local level are a response to the Ohio State House, ignoring the will of Ohio citizens. State legislators and Governor DeWine have made it clear that they plan to maintain a stubborn prohibition against adult cannabis use, and the Ohio Medical Marijuana Program implementation is the worst in the country. Many Ohioans would rather drive to Michigan or Pennsylvania to purchase their medicine, despite the consequences if they are stopped on their return to Ohio. The fact that Ohio has admitted the medicinal value of cannabis proves a lie of over 50 years of prohibition. Here in Kent, the enforcement of marijuana prohibition by our police officers has become problematic. Last summer, Ohio Senate Bill 57 changed the definition of marijuana to exclude hemp. Hemp is essentially cannabis with less than 0.3% THC. Our human officers and K-9 units cannot tell the difference between marijuana and legal smokeable hemp during a roadside stop. Confirmation of the THC level now requires a new test performed at the Richfield BCI State Crime Lab. For this reason, Columbus City Attorney Zach Klein has decided not to prosecute misdemeanor pot cases, and to drop any pending cases. Ohio Attorney General David Yost responded to the passage of this bill by sending a letter to every prosecutor in the state recommending the suspension of marijuana testing, and against the indictment of any cannabis-related items. I will leave you with a quote from John Ehrlichman, who was an advisor to U.S. President Nixon. Ehrlichman was speaking in 1992 about the war on drugs. You want to know what this is really about? Nixon had two enemies, the anti-war left and black people. We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be either against the war or black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and blacks with heroin, and then criminalizing both heavily, we could disrupt those communities. Did we know we were lying about drugs? Of course we did. Please consider carefully our proposed ordinance, and I urge quick adoption. On May the 4th, does this council still want to be fighting Nixon's war on cannabis? Thank you for your time, and I am available for any questions at the email sensiblekent@gmail.com.
Do you have a hard copy of our court can have?
Yes.
Oh, alright, thank you. Further?
Lauren McCown?
Name and address, please, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hello, my name is Lauren McCown, and I am a Kent resident residing at 1365 Sunset Way Boulevard. As mentioned by Dr. Mike Fricki, the sensible marijuana ordinance removes jail time and reduces fines and court costs to $0 for minor cannabis offenses. As the lead petitioner for Sensible Kent, I am here to discuss the biochemistry and medicinal benefit of cannabis from a scientific perspective. To give a little background, I'm a recent business graduate from Kent State, and am returning in the fall for neuroscience and pre-medicine, due to my growing interest in ethiogenic substances. Cannabis is made up of over 100 different compounds, known as cannabinoids, with THC and CBD as two of the most prominent. In our bodies, we have a system of receptors that make up what is known as the endocannabinoid system. This system essentially contains docking sites throughout the body and brain for cannabinoid-type substances. The endocannabinoid system can be thought of as your body's root-level operating system, a central processing unit that regulates and alters the functioning of many other important systems, keeping them in balance. We humans produce cannabis-like molecules, called endocannabinoids, from omega-6 fatty acids in our diet. Processes such as sleep, appetite, cardiovascular regulation, to name a few, are controlled partly by the endocannabinoid system. When it comes to cannabinoids and cannabis, research has shown that cannabis has profound health benefits. More specifically, the major cannabinoids such as THC and CBD have been used in the treatment of neuromuscular disorders, mental health diseases, chronic pain, sleep, and digestion. The only cannabinoid that creates a high effect is THC. In fact, CBD and THC have the exact same molecular structure, except for the fact that the atoms are arranged differently in THC, creating the high effect. Additionally, the majority of hemp-derived CBD products are federally legal. The fact that the endocannabinoid systems in our bodies are receptive to cannabinoid-like substances without the presence of any cannabis is quite interesting. It is also quite interesting how a plant with medicinal properties is still labeled as a Schedule I drug, which according to the DEA, claims to have no currently accepted medical use, despite the fact that it is medically legal and currently available for medicinal use in 33 states. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you give the court a hard copy?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Next, Amy?
Adrian Devault.
Name and address.
My name is Adrian Devault, a Kent voter residing at 1658 Loblawy Court. So, thank you for your time today. I will be graduating Kent State in May, and I will be beginning my master's program the following week. So, I've always been very passionate about helping others, and so I've decided to become a physician assistant. And I would be removed from the program if my background check brought up a drug charge for even a minor misdemeanor offense. So besides the larger, or the potential for a large fine or even jail time, the harshest punishment for drug charges is often the secondary penalties. Please consider some scenarios. A youth is charged with misdemeanor possession of marijuana, a first offense. In the first scenario, the youth is processed through the juvenile system and placed on juvenile probation. The youth later turns 19, and the charge is expunged. In the second scenario, the youth is processed in the adult system and receives deferred prosecution and community service. In this case, at age 19, they must report the offense on job and college applications, or if they want to enlist in the military. And this is what is called a secondary penalty, and it can ruin lives. So although marijuana, or, excuse me, although Ohio decriminalized marijuana use in 1975, an arrest can still be made for even the smallest amount of marijuana. Additionally, under Ohio law, an act that involves a gift of marijuana can result in a drug trafficking, a drug trafficking charge. Trafficking can be charged, even if there is no exchange of money. Passing a joint has been charged as trafficking in some extreme cases. And so for a college student, the drug conviction also impacts financial aid. So students can lose their financial aid because of a drug conviction, that the state of Ohio merely considers a minor misdemeanor, which is akin to a traffic ticket. If a college student is convicted of possession of marijuana, they typically lose eligibility for federal aid for one year for the first offense, two years for the second offense, and indefinitely for the third. Additionally, the clock for the ineligible period starts from the date of conviction, rather than the date of offense. Because of these impacts, drug charges can encourage additional offenses. So a student who is only able to afford college due to federal loans, may find selling marijuana a viable option to make up the difference, if they lose their federal aid. Those whose career dreams are ruined due to a couple grams of pot, may feel that they have little else to lose. And people with more serious charges are often barred from work and housing opportunities, leaving them with few options and perpetrating the cycle. And I would really like to stress, it's not stereotypical criminals and bums that are using marijuana. According to a study done by the University of Michigan, 38% of full-time college students use marijuana at least once in the prior 12 months, and we know that we haven't charged all 38% of them with a charge. Situation is somewhat to prohibition 100 years ago, except the substance is less addictive, less dangerous, and has a lower potential for abuse than alcohol by all reliable metrics. I urge you to, please consider the potential impact to the lives of Kent residents beyond the current statutes and penalties. I urge you to adopt the sensible ordinance of no time and no fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have something the court can have?
I have it.
Alright, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thanks.
Further?
Alexandria Aiken?
What'd you say? The way out of here.
That's it.
Just to speak, the only statistics that I was finding was that those by Kent City Police Department, would you mind if I, because I have to get that after.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, name and address, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Alex Aiken, I live at.
Are you talking to the mic? Take it off. Take it off.
I'm short.
of Ohio merely considers a minor misdemeanor, which is akin to a traffic ticket. If a college student is convicted of possession of marijuana, they typically lose eligibility for federal aid for one year for the first offense, two years for the second offense, and indefinitely for the third. Additionally, the clock for the ineligible period starts from the date of conviction rather than the date of offense. Because of these impacts, drug charges can encourage additional offenses. So, a student who is only able to afford college due to federal loans may find selling marijuana a viable option to make up the difference if they lose their federal aid. Those whose career dreams are ruined due to a couple grams of pot may feel that they have little else to lose. And people with more serious charges are often barred from work and housing opportunities, leaving them with few options and perpetrating the cycle. And I would really like to stress, it's not stereotypical criminals and bums that are using marijuana. According to a study done by the University of Michigan, 38% of full-time college students use marijuana at least once in the prior 12 months, and we know that we haven't charged all 38% of them with a charge. Situation is somewhat to prohibition 100 years ago, except the substance is less addictive, less dangerous, and has a lower potential for abuse than alcohol by all reliable metrics. I urge you to please consider the potential impact to the lives of Kent residents beyond the current statutes and penalties. I urge you to adopt the sensible ordinance of no time and no fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have something the court can have?
I have it.
All right, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thanks.
Further?
Alexandria Aiken.
What'd you say?
The way out of here.
That's it.
Just to speak, the only statistics that I was thinking of were those by Kent Department. Would you mind if I could just add that after?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, name and address, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Alex Aiken. I live at...
Are you talking to the mic?
You can take it off.
Take it off.
I'm short. Okay. Hi, I'm Alex Aiken, and I live at 535 North Water Street. I have grown up in Kent and lived in Kent most of my life, and throughout the past five years, I have become increasingly concerned about the impact that mass incarceration has on our communities. Over the past, so in 2018, I checked, but the 2019 police report has not been issued yet, but in 2018, there were 264 marijuana-related arrests for adults, 12 for juveniles for possession, and one for paraphernalia. Overall, in Kent, there were almost 200 paraphernalia-related arrests last year. A lot of people are not aware that minor, what people consider to be minor convictions like this can ruin your life, and they can also be an issue. Like, say if somebody is in a diversion program, if they get pulled over and charged with marijuana possession, that could be a violation, and then they could end up actually serving time in jail or prison. Just this last weekend, I was in the Portage County Jail, and it is overcrowded. There were people sleeping on the floor. Have any of you guys been inside of the Portage County Jail before?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I know people who have served time in the Portage County Jail, and it pains me to see any person inside of a cage because of something that we know plenty of people in the community are doing. Especially, like, for example, if I were to be charged with marijuana possession, I'm lucky that I have parents who might be able to afford an attorney for me, but what about somebody else who isn't that lucky and doesn't have the type of parental support that I I don't like marijuana. I don't like smoking marijuana, and I don't need any of you guys to like the idea of people in the community smoking marijuana. I think that all of us can agree, though, that it doesn't make sense to put somebody in a literal cage over it, and I hope that you guys will consider that.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Written Communications.
Civil Service Commission Agenda for January 27th was received January 23, 2020. The Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for February 4th was received on January 24th. The Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for February 18th was received on February 11th. The Sustainability Commission Meeting Agenda for February 3rd and minutes from January 6th, and also the Kent Environmental Council Meeting for February 17th was received on January 31st, 2020. A request from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control was received on January 27th, 2020, to transfer the liquor license from Mandalaris Lounge, Inc., number 1387944, doing business as Dominic's Restaurant and Lounge and Patio, to Pelugas Pub, LLC, doing business as Dominic's Restaurant and Lounge and Patio. Chief Lee has no objections.
Move to return with no comment.
Second. Second by John, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, thank you. Further?
Request from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control was received on February 5th, 2020, to transfer the liquor license from Kent Panini's LLC, doing business as Kent Panini's, to Kent Overstuffed Incorporated, doing business as Kent Panini's. Chief Lee has no objections.
Move to return with no comment.
Second.
Second by Garrett, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, thank you. Further?
A letter from the Civil Service Commission members regarding a concern about filling the vacancy on the commission was received on February 6, 2020. Copy of this letter was forwarded to council on February 10. The Board of Health Minutes and Statistical Report from January 14th and the Agenda from February 13th was received on February 11, 2020. And then, under Communication Received After the Agenda Was Published, we received an affidavit of Petitioners Committee for the Circulation of the Sensible Marijuana Ordinance, and that was received on February 12, 2020. And finally, the Kent Parks and Recreation Board Packet for February 20th was received on February 17, 2020.
Okay, thank you. City Manager's Report, Jack?
Yeah, move to approve items 1 through 13 on the City Manager's Report.
Second. Second by John, is there any discussion on any of this? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. She's standing committee, the first committee of the whole. I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th.
So moved.
Second. Second by Gwen, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The action list...
I'll move the action recommended.
Second.
Second by Garrett, any discussion?
Yeah, can we discuss about the pending list? Can we get the idling thing put back on the pending list? Because we were going to talk about it further.
I thought we were going to talk about it further.
Yeah, but we dropped it from the pending list, so do we put it back on?
To put it in committee.
All right.
What was the item? Sorry.
The item. Car idling.
Bring in a causal comment.
That's fine.
No other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's it for committee, the whole committee development. Mr. Kuhar.
Don't believe we have anything.
We do not. No action either. So, that brings us to Streets and Sidewalks. Mrs. Sedoti.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes of the February 5th.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
And I'd like to move the three actions that are recommended.
Second.
Second by Garrett, is there any discussion on the actions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. With the Court Redraft Number 202009 entitled only?
Draft Number 2020-09, in ordinance accepting a donation to the city of Kent for temporary easement, 1-tv, from Stephen John Blaz, trustees of the Blaz's Family Trust for the North Water Street Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Who's suspension?
Second. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Move it up. Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-09 has passed.
Thank you. With the Court Redraft Number 202010 entitled only?
Draft 202010, in ordinance accepting a donation to the city of Kent of a temporary easement to -tv from Richard T. Weiss for the North Water Street Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
Who's suspension?
Second.
Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amerine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-12 has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's all health and safety, Mr. Amerine.
I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes from February 5th, please.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. With the Court Redraft Number 202012 entitled only?
Draft 2020-12, in ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to allow the Community Development Department and Budget and Finance Department to create a new general ledger fund that is necessary to separate city chip funds from other city funds per the guidance of the Chip Funding Agency and declaring an emergency.
No suspension.
Second.
Second by Garrett, is there any, call the roll for suspension, please.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-12 has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's all health and safety, Mr. Amerine.
I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes from February 5th, please.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. There's no action, moving into Finance Committee, Mr. DeLeon.
I'll move the committee meeting minutes from February 5th and the two actions recommended.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, is there any discussion on that? No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. With the Court Redraft Number 202013 entitled only?
Draft Number 2020-13, in ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to allow the Community Development Department and Budget and Finance Department to create a new general ledger fund that is necessary to separate city chip funds from other city funds per the guidance of the Chip Funding Agency and declaring an emergency.
No suspension.
Second.
Second by Garrett, is there any, call the roll for suspension, please.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Garrett, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-13 has passed.
Okay, thank you. The Court Redraft Number 202014 entitled only?
Draft Number 2020-14, in ordinance amending ordinance Number 2019-139, the current appropriation ordinance passed December 18, 2019, so as to adjust appropriations, transfers, and advances from the various funds of the city of Kent to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Garrett, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amarine.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-14 has passed.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Redraft Number 2020-15 entitle only?
Draft Number 2020-15, in ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to take all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPEC 2020 Community Event Sponsorship Program award in the amount of $2,000 and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Jack, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Or, sorry, Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-15 has passed.
Okay, thank you. Would the Court Redraft Number 2020-16 entitle only?
Draft Number 2020-16, in ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to allow the City of Kent Fire Department to operate the newly purchased Polaris Ranger utility vehicle on the roadways within the City of Kent on an as-needed basis and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen, please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Gwen, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerine?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-16 has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the Finance Committee, we're gonna move in, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Heidi?
Yeah, I would like to refer to committee, a discussion of the Sensible Kent's proposal.
What?
I would like to refer to committee a discussion of Sensible Kent's proposal.
Second.
Second. Okay, further discussion, Heidi?
Yeah, I was just really impressed with the, with the presentation, going at it from all angles. And I'd like to hear more about, I'd like to do, I'd like, I'm hoping that, you know, we can do some research and see whether, you know, what other communities have passed this, and see whether this would be a good proposal to bring to Kent as well.
Tracy? Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done, Heidi?
I'm done.
I'm sorry. Tracy?
Yeah, I, I think it's worthy of looking into, and I think they made some good points. I mean, for really minor infractions, why are people being sent to jail? And why is pot illegal when alcohol, which is a much harsher drug? I mean, one out of four people are in the hospital due to alcohol because of either abuse or accidents or, or physical ailments. So, so, yes, I'd like to continue to look at it.
Anybody else have discussion? Gwen?
I think it were, I think it warrants further discussion. I'm not completely convinced that this is specifically the ordinance that best suits what the residents of the City of Kent want, but I think that the residents of the City of Kent would like a conversation about it. So, I'm interested in discussing it, yes.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Kuhar?
Well, you know, if this were the matter of just having a joint in your car and getting caught, I would agree. But, you know, reading some of the quantities that were in that petition, it looked like it was quite a bit more than just having a joint. And it looks like pretty big party quantities. So, I'll, I'll vote against it.
All right, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All right. Further, new business? Tracy?